So it's five o'clock, I think we can start. The normal thing that we do at the beginning is take recognition of visitors and quite often we allow visitors to introduce themselves and then speak. There's quite a few visitors, which is lovely to see you all. We also have some student presentations tonight, and I know some of the students have to leave and parents of the students have to leave, so I think unless people are going to object at the board, I think we'll skip for just a second on the adults introducing themselves and we'll let the kids go with their presentations that they were gonna do and then we'll come back to them. So, okay, there, you're over here. You can go wherever you want. Okay, so Oak Grove and Green Street are both here. Green Street, let's go first. Mark, you're on.
The Green Street's presentations?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have two presentations tonight. Our student senators will be presenting and our restorative justice team. So we have Bella and Clara representing restorative justice, and we're gonna start with them.
So, I'm Tracy, I get to work with these kids doing restorative justice. It's been a really exciting school year. Clara Seymour, this is Clara, she's a sixth grader, and this is Bella McKed. And they're gonna actually talk to you more about it because this is their leadership team. They kinda make the goals and they keep me moving forward, which is really helpful. So, about what I knew.
Restorative Justice at Green Street School.
And their presentation's gonna be us here.
Restorative Justice at Green Street School. Sixth grade students complete official time to help make Green Street a better school. We have thirteen students who are dedicated to other, there are Lucy Horvath, Evelyn Teal, Maggie Hopkins, Savannah Plumb, Hayden Lutter, Lyle Ackerman-Holmes, Jessie Ackerman-Holmes, Cora Rollin, Ellen McKay, Randy Jacoby, Clara Seymour, Cassie Earth, and Rigor Remy. I appreciate school students are mentoring younger students during lunchtime sessions. Teaching moral ethics of nonviolent communication and respect for the readers. Quarterly mix-up day, commitment to promote kindness in our school. We have a senior restorative panel to help with conflict resolution. We meet every other Thursday during the student selection. Students are divided into teams to represent their interests. The teams are kindness committee, meeting buddies, bus video, and conflict representation. What I see here, like, what I feel, like, you guys are willing to. These are some of the words or sentences that we use when helping with conflict, so we're saying the names. On October 30th, Green Street School was created in mixed up day. This day is celebrated by thousands of schools across the country in endeavor to break down social barriers. In third and fourth grades, students will be told directly to the different classrooms during lunchtime. Each classroom will have a few restorative staff members leading activities to help the kids communicate with one another. A national campaign launched by the chief of health and safety department to mix it up at lunchday encouraged students to identify questions and problems within families and asked schools to participate on the last day, on last Tuesday in October of this year. Our students have identified and asked restorative agents are mostly, uh, soon to be on. The gesture helped the asked students to move out of their comfort zones and act as a tool for overwatching. It's a simple act to look out for potential signs, send a social information address across school lines, and help others to produce friendships with each other. When students interact with restorative classes and conversations, they're followed by.
And we don't have a cafeteria, so we mix kids within the classroom, just to help facilitate that new communication and conversation that can happen.
Some of the restorative students have some meaningful programs that they lack in office. We example tool plan data and send home a review to this group. We have a highlight that was popular days, type of talk, a talk draft, a public speaking workshop, and a family. In November, restorative students, they're able to go on a weekly activity, and they create a community bar system. We have a conference center, where they discuss the needs of quality through private police department. We have a contact resolution meeting, called Scott, Barbara, Scott, Flatner, and Rob in areas of social cooperation.
Hi, my name is Bella McKay, I work with Tracy and her group called Restorative Justice. It's mostly about helping kids clear out problems, bullying, fights with friends or peers, etc. I work with a second grader named Andrea. We normally have lunch together or play at the center school library. Most of the times when I allow a group, one or two friends to play really in the house so she can feel more comfortable, more comfortable and hang out with the class. I enjoy having lunch with her and playing with her, because it reminds me of myself and other second graders and everything.
And Clara works with a second grader in the other classroom named Malia, and they get together every week and they just have a special time together. And it's really cute because if Clara's absent or Bella's absent, the kids come to my office and they're like, "Where's my money?" So it's something that they definitely look forward to and it's a really nice relationship that these, our leaders in our school are creating with our younger students. Hopefully inspiring and helpful.
Go in the second and fourth grade classrooms and teach not about communication skills. We create bus behavior for the year with an active group. Continue to support the undergrads' production and assess, recruit interested fifth grade students to join our team.
So thank you, and if you have any questions, I'm sure Bella and Clara can answer them. Can you explain what a bus video is?
It's a video that we make about, like, rules and like what you're supposed to act like on a bus.
We made one last year and the quality wasn't super great, so we wanted to work on it this year as well, so it's kind of in the works. It was not totally good at that this year. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Green Street Student Senate, come on in.
So our next group presenting is our student senators. Student senators are led by Shannon, Ms. Shannon is our librarian, and Bryn Tucker, who couldn't be with us tonight. But I'll turn it over to Ms. Shannon, and maybe you can introduce the kids.
Hi, everyone. I'm gonna let the student senators introduce themselves. Let's start over here and work our way down. And why don't you say your name and what grade you're in?
I'm not here asking you.
I'm Alexandra K. Aitken, I'm in fifth grade as well.
I'm Evelyn Volfer, I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Cynthia Blast, cause I'm in fifth grade.
So we have representation from all grades three through six. There are two students from each class that make up our student senate. A couple of senators made this presentation. You guys practiced today and I'm just gonna move the slides, it's all you.
We're ready. We're gonna what we've been doing in student senate this year. Each class, third through sixth grade, elect to present their class. We have a lot of fun helping Green Street School.
We have a voice for our, for our kids at Green Street School. We represent the kids here for being safe, respectful, and responsible. We take ideas and present them to our group and try our best to succeed.
Green Street Schools received a donation from McDonald's of $6,000. Mr. Spino asked the student senate to help figure out what to do with this room. We decided to get a new slide for the playground. Student senators went around to classrooms and kids voted on their favorite slide. The winning vote was slide number two. Even though the slide was $80 over our budget, we have no doubt we can raise the votes.
This year, we visited the food bank. We learned about the experience of struggling families. This encouraged and showed how, us how important our project, the the thousands campaign is for families. We toured the food bank and viewed a simulation of trying to find enough food to feed their family with limited money.
We collect donations to the bank and participated in the rest of the food bank's fill the glass event at him. We almost reached our goal of 1,000 pounds of food donated at Green Street School.
So Green Street participated in UNICEF, and UNICEF helps kids get past their school and have clean, safe drinking water. So we gave boxes to all of the grades and asked them on Halloween to, when they went out, to also ask for money from UNICEF to put in their boxes, and they helped us buy help and others. And so three of us went to the bank to give UNICEF, to write a check to UNICEF for the money we raised, and we raised, we raised $508.32 in one night.
Student senate took a trip to the William County Humane Society. We learned about what they do to help animals for all kinds. For instance, they drove to New Jersey to keep up six cats from a shelter to bring them back if we want. They have higher adoption rates, so they're more likely to adopt them. We did a donation drive away from the hospital. And we, all the students went to Green Street and introduced the animals.
At Green Street School, every year we have, we have a spirit day, usually once a month. Some this year were pajama day, crazy hair day, and tulip truck spirit day to promote our 5K fundraisers.
So 5K fundraiser is the tulip truck.
So, fairly distributed register, and all of the money goes towards programs like winter sports and our field trips. So, we did raffle tickets this year, and so we helped the PTO and we promoted our raffle tickets to all of our students, and we sold over 1,402 raffle tickets, and this goes to all of our enrichment programs. And we did have a little bit of competition in between the classrooms. So if you met your goal of five tickets per student, third class would get a popsicle party, but the class that raised the most funds and sold the most tickets got a pizza party. So we had some back and forth, like, "We're in the way, no, we're gonna win." So the winning class sold 172 tickets, and since the winner has not been announced, we will not say it. I'll head out tomorrow. I do know those, I have to count.
In conclusion, we love how student senate helps, not just in Green Street, but also in our community.
We like being role models and leaders to other students in this school. It helps us learn responsibility. We also have to give up our free time, free time to help with projects, but we develop new skills. Any questions?
Was there, was there a lot of competition for people who wanted to be in the student senate?
Um, yes.
Not in third grade.
Well, it depends on your liking. Last year, I was in fourth grade, we had like five kids running for student senate, but this year we had three. And they do, for kids who do not get student senate, they do have other things that they can do.
I'd just like to thank all of the kids who are in the student senate and at Oak Grove as well, for all of the work you guys do to make your schools more awesome. You know, we spend a lot of time in our meetings talking about what teachers and administrators do, and I think it's just really terrific that you guys are coming from the ground up, working on making these schools better places, so thank you very much. Oak Grove.
Yep. So, from Oak Grove, we have Catherine Mason, who's our school counselor, and Catherine, along with Lexi Oliver, oversee our student leadership councils. And with her tonight is Avery Bennett. I think they have a little video. I haven't seen it yet, so I'm excited.
I hope it meets with your group. Avery hasn't seen the whole presentation. She is.
Okay, so instead of making a slideshow, we, our leadership team designed it to make a video to explain really what we do in leadership and what it means to us, and some other, like, programs that we participate in. Enjoy.
My name is Simon, and I've been a member of student leadership for two years.
I'm Avery, and I've also been in leadership for two years.
And I'm Priya, and as you may have guessed, I've been in leadership for two years. In student leadership, we do stuff like bake sales and fundraisers for our school and community.
We also are role models for the rest of the school and do skits on our guiding principles at all schools saying.
We also do skits about upcoming events in our school.
We meet once a week to talk about and organize upcoming events.
Leadership is a lot of fun and we enjoy it.
Bake for Good was about baking bread for the food shelf that we could then give to the food for the homeless. Bake for Good is a program run by King Arthur Flower. Then they send us the materials to make rolls from scratch. We learn how to bake bread and how the ingredients work together. It was a lot of fun.
After baking rolls, we delivered them to the local food shelf. A few sixth grade student leaders came with Ms. Mason to deliver the rolls. We were then given a tour of the food shelf. They have a system there for how much food each family gets depending on how many people per household. On each shelf, there is a label saying the food, name, and brand. There are also three stickers on each one marking how many of each you can take depending on how many people you are feeding. It was a fun experience and it made us feel good to give back to the community.
One of the many things that Oak Grove student leaders do is Feed the Thousands. Feed the Thousands is a project to help homeless people in places around Vermont. Usually, people don't think about how lucky they are to have food and water. That is why Feed the Thousands is important to us. What we do to help people of Vermont is we dedicate and advertise boxes all around our school. Then people go around telling classes what the boxes are for. Next, we collect food from the beginning of November to around Christmas break. We, we contribute to Feed the Thousands, which collects more than 200,000 meals and accessories.
Every year, the student leaders go to Landmark College to work on leadership skills. All the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in Brown Road and surrounding towns went. Each student was given a name tag and a colored sticker. Then we broke up into groups and went to the workshops. Workshops were about issues that might happen in day-to-day life, and some of the classes were about how to fix some of the problems and how to avoid them. Each group had 15 to 20 kids, all from all the WSCU districts, so we could meet new kids from all the schools. Next thing we did was eat the best and most memorable part, because it was so good. Every year, the fifth and sixth graders, greater student leaders go to BAM, where we talk about leadership with Police Captain Officer Carrier. We discussed that, what it means to be a good leader and how we can make a difference at our school. We also spent the afternoon eating and working on awesome team building activities.
We sit with kids we don't know so we can learn more about them to see if they enjoy the same things we do.
We learn new stuff about them each year.
And it's fun to make friends.
I like making friends.
Priya, could you please tell me about this model school award that Oak Grove received?
Sure. The Poverty Law Center gave Oak Grove an award for all of its activities to include students.
Oh, you mean like mix it up at lunchday, where we sit with new kids?
Yeah, that was a lot of fun. Do you remember when we went to the Dohmerson Field and played games?
Yeah, we, we played games with all of the students in different classes to get to know kids and so we can make new friends.
Oh yeah, in summer, in the summer, right?
Yeah, um, what were the things that you liked to do there?
Um, I really liked meeting new friends and there were some fun games that we did, and that's pretty much the main reason. What did you learn?
I learned about how, like, about empathy and about like how to have everyone included and like, so like, if there was like a bad situation and you like just walk away from it and how to stick up for myself, that's, and help out others. Um, and like you said, I, I liked meeting new friends also, so, yeah.
Thanks, we had a lot of fun actually making this video. It took some time, but the kids were really into it and it became its own project. It's one of my great honors to work with students that are inspired, inspiration every year. Thank you.
Okay, so we started out, jumped ahead into the regular agenda, so now I'm gonna jump back into it and go, I guess, to review, prioritize, establish desired outcomes, so we could look at recognition approval. I'm just gonna throw a heads up that at least one person has to leave by 6:30 tonight, so we're gonna keep up time. And if it's okay with everyone, I'm gonna jump ahead to one more thing and do business, which is item C, West Brown Road Fire Station Academy School property, because we have two folks here to talk to us about that. Any problems from the board, I'm jumping to them. Alrighty then.
Is there a place we should be?
Well, the camera likes you, so, over near the camera.
Here, why don't I set that? You can sit up.
You can slide down if you want.
That's okay, here you go gentlemen. I'll just lean down for a second.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So good evening, thank you for seeing us tonight. As some of the board members will certainly recall, back in 2013, the town approached the school board and was seeking a certain amount of flexibility with the way in which we progressed with the police and fire facility, and in particular, with the way in which we designed and installed the new fire station in West Brown Road. Board was very kind at the time, gave us a great deal of flexibility, and asked at that time that we come back at the conclusion of the project and to define a piece of property for the West Brown Road Fire Station and to take steps to take ownership of that property. We recently completed the project.
Sorry, at that time, it was a 90-year lease or something, right?
It was a, there's a 99-year lease, presently in effect, yeah. Well, there's different, different leases of property. Uh, there's, there's certainly quite a bit of overlap. Right, I mean, the lease was on a property that the existing fire station sat upon. Correct, which is presently, which now presently holds the parking lot, and where the parking lot used to be now holds the fire station.
As I recall, we didn't wanna define it because you didn't know if something might happen during construction or whatever, we wanted to give you an opportunity to get it done. Yes?
That's my recollection as well. And so, we appreciated that flexibility. Uh, we moved forward with the project, I think we completed the project successfully recently, um, and so we're now sort of trying to do some cleanup and some housekeeping. I have since learned that in the intervening years, there's been some additional discussions that involved Andy and Ron Staley and Fire Chief Akasi, particularly around the lands just east of the new fire station, where the old flagpole used to be and there's a little concrete walkway, I believe used to be the entrance to the old academy school. And so, rather than just a minimal shaping out of the property, it's kind of grown to include that, that property just east of the current station. So, recently, I reached out to Lyle and let her know that, you know, we were taking steps to try and follow through on this. And even more recently, I think on Monday, we set up a meeting, Lyle was there, Kelly was there, Andy was there, Fire Chief was there, zoning administrator was there. The idea was to make sure that everybody's on the same page in terms of the general shape and size and scope of the property. Agreement was immediate, everybody seemed to be on the same page. The next step in order for us to move forward is the town is engaging a surveyor to properly define and mark out the property, to of course come back and, you know, present that both to the town and to the school district. And then I've invited Bob Fisher here to perhaps briefly walk through the process of transfer of ownership of property between the school district and the town, and to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you. So with regard to the process, first step is really the survey. Second step will be a certain amount of permitting for the lot line adjustment as between the school property and the town property. And Brian Bannon from the planning office will certainly help with that, but I think the school district will need to sign at least that application, so we have a proper lot line adjustment happening. so we have a, a proper lot line adjustment, uh, happening as far as the Planning Office. Then, as far as the conveyance of the property that will go from the school district to the town, there are really, uh, two options as to how that happens. One is a special town meeting, which most school districts and, and legis, and select boards don't like to go through because it's a lot of work. The other is a section pursuant to the statute whereby the school, the owner, the school district, gives public notice in the newspaper of the impending conveyance. So we set forth it's going to be conveyed to the town. Perhaps there's reference to a map, or at least where somebody can review the map. Uh, that gets published and we have to wait 30 days after that, uh, until, uh, for, for any call comment period. But what it really is, is during that 30 days, if there is a petition by 5% of the voters to take it to a town meeting, uh, then you'd have to go to a town meeting. In this situation, I don't foresee that there would be much, uh, debate with regard to this, but you never know. But then after that 30 days, the, uh, agent for the school makes the conveyance and everything gets recorded in the, uh, town clerk's office. So, you have your option there, but I'm assuming the latter option would be the most efficient. Do you have any questions, uh, after answering?
Spoon, did you have your hand up there? Did you have a question?
Uh, no.
Anybody else have a question? And Andy and Kelly, you all are happy, fine?
And to the extent with regard to those notices that go in the paper, we do those for various towns that we represent. So, it's probably, I, I can certainly provide the school district with a template or a proposed, uh, notice once we get the survey. The survey really is the first step so that we, everyone has a picture of what's being conveyed.
So, once you get the survey, are we gonna come here before the notice?
Yes, oh, yes. We, we certainly want to review the survey, make sure it's right. Uh, you know, just having two sets of eyes on it, I think, makes it that much better.
Do we have a general idea of the size of the?
That's more a question for Patrick.
I honestly, I, I am not a good gauge. I, I can't just gauge that. Um, it's, I guess probably, let me see, Andy, maybe about 30% bigger than the original 99-year lease property?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, 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 the area where the, where the, uh, flagpole was and where the sidewalk presently is, um, you know, the, the chief and, and Andy had a conversation, you know, if kids wanna have, of course, you know, there would, obviously, we would, you know, welcome any and all kids using that land and, and we would take care of its maintenance, so.
That does bring up one question. The, um, West Brower Association, particularly, parents have been, uh, having summer movies outside there. That could continue as well.
I would think so.
Yeah, I don't think anything, this would, this would not adversely impact any of those kinds of activities. Um, and there was even, we've been in a conversation about putting up picnic tables and so forth. Uh, but the one thing I would add is something I brought up at the time when we first discussed this, and that is that, um, this is a piece of land, it's property and has value, it's, I would think, fair amount of value, so I think the board is happy to give it to the town. But I, I think that the town should be giving something back to the school district. Um, and I'm not talking about money, but, but service and kind. Um, and I think there, there are a lot of things that we do with the town, and town does for us, but I'd like to be able to have some type of agreement that the school department could, could exercise to get some stuff, some compensation down the road. Like I drive, we have to, for example, we have puddles in our driveways at the academy school. We usually have to hire someone to come in and fill those every year. The truck goes right by there. Um, so, things like that, I think, would sort of make me feel better.
I, I think there's a, there's probably a slightly broader discussion going on there between the town and the school district on a range of complimentary and services that we provide. And I know we'd be happy to engage in that conversation.
Tom, I'd like to ask, go over our complimentary numbers.
I also, sorry Spoon, I also have one question that we had discussed as a board back in September, I think?
Sure.
Early September, and I have not heard back. And the last stuff that we heard is we were sending it over to the town. There's apparently some funds, and I think it was being kicked to you about that. Funds were given by the state at some point and they're marked for education for Brower children. And they've just kind of been sitting in your coffers and the discussion was whether maybe they could come this way. And we have some as well. There's also a Brower School Endowment that's out there. Be something for this board to look at and how to manage those a little bit better. We've not heard back whether those could come our way. That was the, excuse me, the question that was posed.
So, I've been, you know, I got a heads up from Lyle that you might be interested in talking about that. And so, I've been sort of talking with Bob, uh, reaching out to John and trying to get a sense as to what exactly, you know, which funds are we talking about and what are the obligations, if any, that the town has to continue to administer them or possess them. Um, I have yet to really be able to get a clear sense as to which funds we're talking about. So, what I would propose, I'm absolutely willing to explore this and to get it resolved in, you know, satisfactory a way as we possibly can in a timely fashion. What I think might make sense is, um, to put John O'Connor and Frank Rucker in touch with each other to sort of identify the specific funds that we're talking about and then we can more, um, quickly have-
That was actually our directive to Frank back in September, and I thought he'd reached out, but I haven't heard back from the town side.
Okay.
We did get a statement from them about how much, what was in that fund and that sort of explanation what it came from, but after that, really-
Right, that was the beginning of it.
Right, that was-
Follow-up, yes.
In response to that, it was us saying, how about if we get, have that one? Is that possible?
Yes.
So, what I can assure you is I'm happy to sort of shepherd this investigation. I, I, I'm not sure where it's at. I kind of found out about this a couple of, maybe a week or two ago by via some, some email communication with Lyle. Um, but, um, you know, if we can identify the, you know, what accounts we're talking about, then we can work through and identify exactly what-
I don't want you to thank Patrick as being, uh, standoff, standoff is the wrong word, but-
Am I coming off first?
No, no, many of the accounts, uh, have different, uh, restrictions on them and what they're for, who they're held by, and whether they're held by trustees of public funds, which there's a whole section of municipal law as to the parameters of what the, how the trustees can manage those funds. So we need to know the specifics of each fund in order then to sort of, each one, go through the analysis of it.
Right, so that's exactly where we were in September. We understood that there was that sort of stipulation and our request was that we specifically asked the town if Frank did reach out and find out, you know, whether they were able to be moved. So, I, I, from my recollection, we're still at the same point.
Yeah, I, I think we need to have John O'Connor and Frank specify exactly those. I've just had a, sort of on the 30,000-foot, you know, view of things, uh, looking, discussion with, uh, Marshall Wheelock, who's on the, one of the trustees for public funds. But we left it where we really needed more specificity before moving forward. So, I apologize if that wasn't followed up on, but I think now's the time to do-
I think we, we know the funds that we're talking about though from our side and I don't have the, the thing Kim's looking for right now, but there was, um, a specific named fund with a balance in it.
There were two of them.
We know the information that you're looking for, so it's just a matter of putting those together.
Yeah, Mr. Price has it.
That would be great. Do we have the source documents of how those funds were created? That's another-
That would be with you, not us. I mean, that, that was our question, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have to dig to find out whether those were left, left by some bequest of-
They were, they were, they were bequest by, no, I think it was two individual people.
Right, but it was like funds that they didn't have a will put in place?
Yes, they did, yes, they had no beneficiaries and they were-
Yes, so it's the names of schools, okay.
And so, they were, they named the schools, the town, children of Brower. And so, that's why they were, so they kind of ended up with the town, although it seems like it makes sense. And the reason we were mostly interested in that is because Frank had pointed out that we have also under, under the school board's, um, control, I guess, but it's not really earning anything. And then there is a separate entity of the Brower School Endowment. So there's three smaller funds that if put together would likely reach the goals that I know the Brower School Endowment was actually established to achieve some seven, eight years ago.
The capital would be big enough then that we could start using some of that to evidence to-
It sounds like some work has been done already then.
Well, only that Frank knew this and brought it to us and said what about this and by the way, this is over here in the town, and we said, please go forward, but then we've not heard anything back. It was like waiting to hear back from the town. But I don't know who he's talking to, so as long as you were coming, it was in my head to ask again.
Well, we can certainly be in touch with John O'Connor, uh, and then take it from there. I mean, town meeting is now passed. It's a good time of year to do some of these follow-up progress.
Jump in there, Spoon.
How much are we talking about?
Yeah, we knew at that time, I think it was 300,000, is what my head?
I, I wanna say around about that with all, all three combined, that is.
All three combined got us to around 350,000.
That's the money that you think the town has to-
350,000, so we have.
We have. What is the town that we wanna get back?
I think the town might have been around 100 and we were at 200 and then the endowment's already at 70,000. Or we have 100 and they have 200. I don't remember.
It's not an insignificant amount.
Sure.
That's material, so. We will find it. We will find out the rules associated with it and we'll get back to you as promptly as we can and support whatever future action is legally provable.
And it sounds like we'll wait for the survey to come and then, once we have that and you can also send us a wording column, then we can make a formal motion and, and move that forward at that time. But at this point, we can't do anything.
That's correct. That's a good point.
Any other questions for Tom and Patrick? Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good night.
So, we're now gonna actually try to go to the real agenda. I don't think there's anybody else that has to jump forward. So, we're gonna do recognition of groups, individuals, anybody that's here. So, if you guys would like to stand up and state your name and then if you have a specific reason that you wanted to come to one of our happy meetings here, please let us know.
Um, I'm Kanter Kate Judd. I'm the spiritual leader of the Brower Area Jewish Community. Um, I bumped into Spoon at the co-op today and he told me that you guys were going to be talking about a recent problematic presentation that occurred in some of the area schools about the Israel-Palestine situation. And so, not knowing entirely what the nature of that discussion might be, I thought it might be important for me to be here.
I am Stefan Branstadter, co-president of the Brower Area Jewish Community. And like Kate, I ran into Spoon this afternoon morning at the co-op. He informed me about this meeting and so I felt it incumbent upon me to be here, present and witness and hear and see what's happening and perhaps even lend a voice. Thank you.
And Beth?
I'm Margery Khybar and I attended the presentation at BAMs. I have a daughter, a foster daughter in the 11th grade. And I wanted, one of the, one of the teachers from BAMs who wasn't, was absent that day, um, was trying to find someone to come see the presentation, since she wasn't gonna be able to do it. So I did and, um, I was a little surprised and disappointed in the presentation. So I'm also here to hear what, what you're gonna be speaking about.
So just to be clear, you were attending the BAMs presentation? And just so you know, we're only the elementary schools, so.
Yes, and I went to, I had to use the same speaker.
Right, but I just wanna make sure you knew which board was which.
And I also, you know, I, I also spoke to people who were at the, um, elementary school presentation, so I'm, I'm a little bit aware of what took place.
Okay, perfect.
That might promote speaker?
That might promote picking those heads up.
Oh, it would, it would be very helpful. I don't have 100% hearing, although my hearing's not bad. I did not really hear a word of that last, of that statement. I, and, and so if people would stand up and either come forward or speak loudly would be a big help.
So she was just saying she was at the 11th, well, she has an 11th grader, but she's heard of the BAMs presentation and she attended the presentation, which is the same speaker.
I heard your, yeah, okay, fine. Thank you.
Thanks, I'm Derek Jordan. I'm Margie's husband and just another concerned citizen about, I was also at the BAMs presentation.
Hi, I'm Lily Davis. I have three children who have graduated from the school system. Um, I'm a member of the Brower Area Jewish Community. One of my children is living and studying in Israel right now. I've just come back from three weeks there. And as parents, we get official information from the education, uh, the Ministry of Education, especially around political situations. So, I felt like it, I did not see the presentation, um, but I wanted to be here to see what is being presented to other students in the community.
So, I guess maybe it would make sense for us, unless board wants something else, to jump right to that section of the meeting and discuss that. Um, I know that, I only know basically what was in the comments and then there were a couple more letters that people sent. If we wanna read those at this point, I think it would be good.
I think we should hear from the administration.
Well, I'd like to maybe read the letters first so we have all the public comment and then maybe we can hear from Andy and Lyle.
Um, before we get going, can you give, uh, provide, like, some parameters for this? How long do we wanna spend in this? Uh, what kinds of things we wanna do here now, uh, before we get it? I don't know where it's due.
I don't either, but it's, it's, so you could jump right in. I think we need to read the, the letters from these other people that we promised we would read, that they had asked.
Now, I've gotten four letters so far. Are there more or less?
I've seen three.
Three?
So, there's, um, one from Carolyn de Marsico. And she said, "I'm a devoted member and mother and community member who as a child would attend academy school. I truly love my community and all of our schools. I wholeheartedly trust my child's teachers, including everyone who works hard every day to present the best possible learning environment and academic activities. If it wasn't for the teachers at my child's school, the children wouldn't be the amazing people they are today. They have helped provide the community with the best possible education for our children and I am truly grateful for all of them. Because of this, I am in full support of academic freedom for all of our teachers. Injuring their academic freedom in any way would only harm our children's education and make it tougher on our teachers and schools to be able to provide the very best possible education." "Fully support the choice my child's teacher made to bring a Palestinian speaker to come to the classroom and have a discussion. That day, my child came home bursting with firsthand knowledge and stories to retell. Because of my teacher's choice to bring a speaker to the classroom, my child's class was able to hear firsthand knowledge and get a deep connection to the rest of the world. This may or may not have been directly in their curriculum, but it is a direct connection to a part of the world they may never have a chance to get as close with again in their lives. Now, some may say that some students may be too young to hear firsthand stories from a man who grew up in Palestine, but I strongly disagree. I believe that across all grade levels, children should be able to freely expand their thinking to any and all part, or any and all aspects of the world. Not only did my child come home with more knowledge of the planet we live on, but came home with a greater appreciation for the education they receive and empathy for other children on the other side of the world. This form of education is priceless and without the power of our wonderful teachers, it wouldn't be possible. Please, I beg of you to continue to give our amazing teachers the power of academic freedom without the possibility of interference. I truly thank you for taking the time to read this and think deeply about the freedom of our wonderful teachers." That was number one. If anybody else has these up, I don't need to be the only one reading. Anybody else wants to jump at it? No? Here, nobody else? Next one is Grady Smith. "Dear board members, I'm the father of a third grader at academy. I'm writing together today to share my thoughts on the recent Palestinian speaker at the local schools. If possible, I wish to have read aloud on record. I feel that exposing students to discussions about difficult and complex-" I feel that exposing students to discussions about difficult and complex subjects better prepares them to make informed decisions. The opportunity to engage with voices from diverse backgrounds can only foster conversation, conversations that will hopefully extend beyond the classroom. The idea that this was a controversial subject speaks to the privilege of American children and specifically white American children. When would these students be exposed to this conflict and specifically the struggles of Palestinians? Were these not the observations of someone who has experienced Palestinian life? How is that unbalanced? What is the balanced approach to this? Are there really only two sides? Of course not. I don't think anyone could argue against the notion that the overall national narrative on this subject favors the state of Israel. Are we really against providing time for another perspective? What are we really teaching our children if we can't trust them to handle uncomfortable topics? One would hope they'd grow up to be people who go through life hearing and processing information from all angles. Don't we want them to be prepared to do that? Lastly, do we really want to take more control out of our teachers' hands? The idea to have a protocol flies in the face of rethinking teachers, teachers with different backgrounds and ideas. Thank you for your time, Grady Smith.
I can read the other one.
Perfect.
Okay, this is from Frederick Noyes and Kathy Urfer. And they say to the WSESU board, "We ask that this letter be read aloud on the record at your board meeting. As the parents of a child in the third grade at academy school, we are writing to express our support for our teachers to invite guests of a variety of social, cultural, and religious backgrounds who can share different stories and ideas as our students study the events and issues in our complex and increasingly interconnected world. Our son appreciated the guest speaker who came in April. We are glad that he and his classmates were able to hear about the people and some of the circumstances that continue to unfold on a daily basis and to contemplate our possibly unnoticed connections to world events here in southern Vermont. The discussions and reflections continue for weeks afterward as the students continue to build critical thinking skills and the ability to consider several threads within a larger fabric. We believe that our elementary school-aged children are curious, thoughtful, engaged, and capable of complex thinking. We believe that our students appreciate challenging and appropriately nuanced discussions at all grade levels, including those pertaining to contemporary events. In many cases, these are events and situations our budding generation of citizens are hearing about on news broadcasts and seeing in magazines and newspapers. Having guest speakers in class gives a unique and immediate connection to the larger world and we are glad for the opportunities such occasions can provide. Sincerely, Frederick Noyes and Kathy Urfer."
So then at this point, Spoon, I don't know that I'm still answering your question. I'm not trying to ignore it, but I think we need to hear from Andy and Lyle as to...
Yeah, yeah.
And then maybe we'll know whether we have a lot more to discuss tonight.
So there are a number of issues and a number of layers to this, to this situation. That one, I'm going to speak boldly here, that, that, that support that you read in that letter, those four letters.
Three.
Three letters, is speaking to a couple of issues. One is in support of, of the teacher.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt Andy, but could you just start by summarizing exactly what was, what happened? The situation described first and then let's discuss after.
So several weeks ago, a third grade teacher brought into the school a, a guest speaker who was billed as a storyteller. It's not uncommon for us to have storytellers to come in, come into school. Happens on occasion. And storytellers come in and might tell children stories. Or we had a woman come in recently, Dr. Joyce, who was in her 80s and she had these wonderful stories that she shared with students, sixth grade students. They'll have morals to them, you know, very interesting stories that were very appropriate. It's also very appropriate that sixth grade students are writing narratives, so it's a curriculum match there. In this particular case, there was no curriculum match. Dr. Joyce's situation, this, it was developmentally appropriate. What she was sharing, the knowledge she was sharing with the students, the teaching she was doing, matched the developmental age of the children. In this situation, this gentleman came in, was not a storyteller, albeit he told a story, his. Was not a storyteller, at least in, in the way that I view it. So I felt like, first of all, the situation was a little misrepresented in terms of the entrance of the, you know, into the school. So he presented, he presented a, you know, of the conflict between Israeli and Palestinians from his perspective, which, which I'm sure is valid, it's his perspective. And third graders do, don't have the background knowledge or the developmental ability to really put that in perspective. They have no background knowledge, therefore they couldn't have perspective, there was one perspective his. So that, because of, because that was presented that way, that presented some conflict in the school. Presented an issue with, with a number of folks, including the Jewish community, including faculty who were, who were Jewish at, at the school and students who were Jewish at the school, some Jewish students at the school. So that presented an issue. We addressed it as, as the folks in charge of the school, as administrators, from a number of levels. We addressed the fundamental issue that, that's important when, whatever we're doing, we're exposing kids to content or curriculum, that has to be developmentally appropriate. If we're exposing them to difficult topics or controversial topics that, that, and there are many. Our world is full of conflict. Our world is full of difficult issues. And that we want to develop critical thinkers. We want to give kids the knowledge and ability to, to be critical thinkers and make decisions based on, on what they think is right, based on their belief system. And that's our goal, but not to, not to tell kids how they should think. If you only present one side, especially to eight-year-olds, in essence, you are telling them what to think. So, so those are some of the issues. In terms of the developmental issue, in terms of a process where speakers are announced or connected to the content, that's a management issue. That's what you pay us to do and we did it. We addressed it a number of ways with the teacher involved and created a, a process now by which, it's a form I can show you, we made, that whenever someone is bringing a guest speaker into the school, they simply submit this form for approval and ask a couple of questions. Description of the presentation and topic. We asked how this presentation relates to the curriculum and grade standards. Do you plan to notify parents of the speaker and the content? Are you attend, is there a statement and so forth? So it's pretty straightforward, but we do maintain as a school system and that we do control the curriculum. For example, you know, we require people to teach math. We don't say to teachers, "Teach whatever math you want in third grade or in sixth grade." We say, "This is the math that you're teaching in, in that grade level." And the same with bringing in guest speakers. So one of the things that frustrates about those letters is that it appears that the teacher is soliciting support for this so-called notion of, this notion of academic freedom. Third grade, we're not talking college, we're not talking about high school students. We're talking about third graders, eight-years-old. Teachers don't have academic freedom to introduce controversial topics to eight-year-olds in our school system, or probably any school, any public school system in the United States. We have a set curriculum. Teachers are paid to teach students the curriculum. So I find that almost egregious as the error she made in, in bringing in the speaker. So I think I've said enough and probably...
What was the process before for guest speakers?
There was no formal process. Informal, we, the expectation was people let us know, "Oh, by the way, I'm having a speaker presenter in my classroom next Tuesday," kind of thing. So we were very informal, which is probably...
Basically twenty-foot.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll add that Andy has met with members of the Jewish community. There has been, there had been meetings with Steve Perrin, principal of Brattleboro High School, Keith Lyman, principal of BAMS, with John Underleiter. I've met with John, Andy, Steve, and Keith all together in a group to make sure that we have this, this type of thing in place. Also to talk about what's developmentally appropriate. Any discipline, of course, we're not going to speak about in open session, but anybody that was involved in bringing in speakers, and I would have to say the same happened at BAMS, that the content was misrepresented. The content at the BAMS was supposed to be about having difficult conversations. And that's not what happened. So I do want to assure you that we have been listening and trying to put things in place so that we don't repeat the same issue. And I want to also agree totally with Andy. We have the authority to put into place this type of thing to ensure that teachers are following curriculum. That's our job.
One of my problems here or is that we have three letters that you read very clearly. They're, they're very eloquent letters. So they were clearly written by very educated parents. Their three kids were in that class and they came home. And whatever they heard from their kids impressed them very favorably. Now, I wasn't there. It would be nice if, say, that teacher gave an assignment to the whole class to write a story about what they learned that day. No questions, no parameters, nothing suggested or anything, that I could read and to try to get some handle on what those kids could understand and what they did understand. I've been often awful surprised at what little kids understand. I remember many years ago, 40 years ago, walking, taking a walk with an old friend's young son of five-years-old. We're walking along and he says, "You know, my mommy is very unhappy." Did, did, did he misunderstand anything? Do you think he was right? Do you think he was, he knew exactly what was going on? I mean, he didn't know all the details, but he understood the feelings. And I'm always surprised again and again at what children, and, and perhaps it's a, a part of that is how something is presented to kids. I suppose one person can make a presentation, one teacher, that could leave kids frightened or worried or something. And another presentation might leave them very excited about wanting to know more and the, the kinds of experience that we, that we look for. So I, so, so there's a few issues here. One is, of course, the content. The other is school policy. And I understand that. So, and, and, and I think it's important to separate those issues. I'm not sure there was any problem of what was said because there seems to be no evidence of that.
Well, there is.
Except there are some parents, I guess, I hear, they aren't here and they didn't quite matter. But I hear second, on the third...
Okay, I can actually speak to that one. I will just mention, I am on the Diversity and Equity Committee and we talked directly with a person who was at this presentation and was upset by it. So I actually have a lot more information than what's said here. I'm not sure how much I should go into about it because...
She asked for us to read it at that meeting, but she did not ask us to read it.
Okay. But which, which one was she at? The BAMS one or the...
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I actually spoke to the person in question before coming to this meeting because I was teaching her daughter a Mitzvah lesson.
Okay.
And she said she was sorry she couldn't be here, but that she wished that her views would be represented. So I don't think you would be crossing any boundaries to do that.
Okay. So at the meeting, she had sent a message to Lyle and then she came to the meeting also to sort of explain her experience. And she said that she absolutely did not think that she wanted to suppress having, learning about this type of stuff at school, about controversial topics, but that there was some specific things that went down in this particular presentation and the way that the kids reacted to it and the way that the speaker reacted to the kids' reactions that made her feel extremely uncomfortable. So, is it okay if I mention the specifics there?
I think so.
Okay. So as the person, it was basically like a storytelling of his own life. And in response to some of the stuff that he mentioned, actually, I, my, I'll also fully give background. I am also Jewish and my tribe was in this class too. So I asked him when he came home, like, "Well, what did you guys talk about?" And he mentioned that there was something in the storytelling that talked about kids, seven-year-olds throwing rocks at tanks. So some of the children in the class who heard that were like, "I would throw rocks too." And then the speaker responded, "Thank you." Now, when we talked about this in our meeting, some of the people who had seen this gentleman present other places mentioned that this was his response to every comment, that whenever someone sent something back to him, he was like, "Thank you", just basically thanking them for responding. And that it was suggested that perhaps there might have even been a language barrier where he didn't fully get what the kids were saying. And so that, instead of saying, "Well, hold on a second, I don't want to condone violence", he just said, "Thank you", but it seemed as if he was condoning violence by his response to that. So that was the primary thing that was discussed as being the upsetting thing. And I absolutely get that and agree that we should never be having a presentation that leaves kids thinking the best response to this is to be violent, right? And I, I don't think that was the intention even of the presenter, but there is something that I think maybe speaks a little bit about the, the age that like, okay, that's going to be a response, then let's talk about that and make sure that that isn't just left out there as, okay, that's an okay way to, to talk about this. So I...
Can you just read it?
To read it, can I?
I'm going to, you might know better than I do, Kanter. I... Well, as I say, I was speaking with Orly right before this meeting and she seemed to indicate that she would want her views represented here. I, I don't know whether, you know, this will represent that or not, but I don't think you're crossing any confidentiality boundaries, but I, you know.
Okay. So this is the letter that she wrote. Dear Lyle, Two weeks ago, I was present for part of our presentation by a Palestinian man named Mr. Ziyad. I arrived about five to 10 minutes into the presentation, so I didn't see it in its entirety, but I feel the need to share with you my feelings regarding this presentation. Thank you in advance for taking the time to read this letter in its entirety. First of all, I want to assert that I don't deny that this man was speaking his truth. I am a firm believer in someone speaking out when they feel there has been an injustice. However, I'm very unhappy with how it transpired. I had thought that one of the goals of the diversity team, this, as she was presenting this, our committee, was to bring more awareness about people and their different religions, race, economic needs, family structures, gender identity, and more, in order to build understanding, acceptance, and respect. From what I experienced, the presentation had the opposite effect. I was in a classroom with third and fourth graders. Many of the students responded to the presentation by saying they would throw rocks too. One student said, "We should bomb them, Israelis." To each of these students, Mr. Ziyad responded, "Thank you for saying that." It felt that the message that many of these students walked away with was that people who are Jewish and/or Israeli are bad. Developmentally, it is completely normal for students that age to hear something and then to generalize. It takes tremendous planning and time to teach students this age to process information and to think critically. This is an age when students are slowly becoming aware that the world exists outside their own perception. own perceptions and experiences. Some of them still have trouble seeing the situation from someone else's point of view, much less being aware that there can be multiple perspectives of a single situation. Furthermore, the Israeli-Palestinian conflict is an issue that is complex for most adults to understand. Also, in thanking the students for their words, the speaker was condoning violence. Is this the message we want to teach our students? I thought that we want our students to think critically, to examine an issue from many perspectives, and to use peaceful means to resolve differences. We want our students to have compassion for others. This cannot happen if they show their compassion for one group of people by threatening another group of people. This is the part where I'm just a little bit uncertain.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna skip a paragraph that talks specifically about the personal issues, but I'll just summarize by saying that there, it felt to this family very personal and made them feel kind of unsafe or supported in the classroom. Okay? I want to emphasize that I'm not advocating that we don't teach our students about injustices and the atrocities that have occurred in history. It's tricky to know when to do it, at what age it's appropriate. As a parent, I want my children to be knowledgeable, but I also know that presenting them with certain kinds of information when they are too young to understand it can cause a lot of trauma. And then I'm gonna skip the rest of it about the, her family. I'm heartened by Andy's response after the presentation. Thank you for taking the time to read this letter, and I hope that you can share my thoughts with the diversity team as well. Sincerely.
Okay. So I, there's a whole bunch of issues and I don't know that we would resolve anything with that. Hours and days and decades and this situation over there has been going on for a long time. So I, I come back to the larger view of what is our role as school board here and what do we need to do? And to me, I'm hearing that we've, they've taken steps, that it was an unfortunate situation. I'm sure if we all think about it, there's other times when other speakers have seemed wrong in some way, or a teacher's decision for something else has seemed wrong. I mean, that's just nature of humans, but I think that they've listened and taken steps.
Can I just ask, this form, is this document part of just Academy School's process, the town schools, or WSU?
Just the academy.
Right now, it's Academy. We have a leadership meeting on Friday in which I have that on our agenda. How are, how are?
Okay. So, because I just wanted to clarify that, because when we had our meeting, I was under the impression that this was like gonna be adopted at the SU level, but then Spoon brightly brought up that like, well, can they just like adopt policies without the board meeting and voting on it?
This is not policy.
Or is this something that's like a whole procedure?
This is a procedure.
Okay, procedure.
And it may look different at the high school level. It may look different.
Okay. So this is just something that each administrator is considering implementing and.
Only the board can set policy. UHIRS accept procedures to run and manage the schools.
Okay.
And this is strictly a management procedure. Not a policy, it's just a procedure.
Okay.
David. Well, first, I want to thank you for making sure that this all came up because I only saw one letter and read the reformer and didn't see if there's something in the comments today. I was busy delivering it. But I'm really grateful that I have enough background to have some sense of what, what the problem was. And I don't think the problem is this, having a policy or having this procedure is, I don't think is a problem at the Queens and spending the time at all, but whether this should be filled out regularly, I think it's perfectly reasonable. I think we do need to spend some time, not tonight, but looking at what our responsibility is, which is primarily comes from the educational qualities, the educational quality standards, which includes sections on historical sources and evidences, evidence, evaluating them, and includes sections on civic virtues and democratic principles, all of which are brought into, brought to life by, by this particular topic.
So what would the board do with that?
What's that?
What do you want the board to discuss?
I'd like to, to follow up on how are we doing these things? I mean, is, what's, because to me, this is, to me, it's not about curriculum so much. It's about the quality standards, about comparing information from different sources, using primary sources. And this is for second graders and fifth graders. Origins of original sources, questions that can be developed about, about sources, applying civic virtues, and identifying beliefs and experiences and perspectives and values that underline people's points of view. Those are things that are in the, in the quality standards. And that, to me, is what should be the, the heart of something.
And that relates to the, the curriculum, so that.
It's not like math though. I mean, we don't have a laid-out history or civics curriculum.
Right, but there, there are standards for all of our content, from music and art to social studies, to literacy, to math, to health, right? The, all, this curriculum and, and, and that's not curriculum. So you, you blend that, you take the curriculum and you apply it there. You just don't decide, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit these exact course things and today I'm, I'm gonna do it on this concrete topic. And tomorrow I'm gonna do it on this topic because it, because it's near and dear to my heart and I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. But that's not how we do it. That, that gets applied to a specific curriculum, you know, in, in third grade or fifth grade or sixth grade. So, you know, what, what are we studying? Say, US history, how we apply it to US history in a particular grade, for example? Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. And I, my question is how, you know, where are the examples, where these things come into play? How, how do you do it?
But I don't know, David, in order to get to the answer of your question, would you want them to take just one sample and show us at some point? I mean, because obviously they do this all the time with all the sort of different things.
Yeah, I'd like to see some concrete samples, but not tonight. I don't want to really go take.
So bring that up in August and look at it for the roadmap or something?
I will.
That's a true. Okay, so Spoon, then, I'm gonna take all the board first and then come to you. Spoon?
One of my concerns, I am a product of good schools, at least all the parents thought so. There was a white, middle-class suburban New York school district with modern schools, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I got out of public schools. What I knew about slavery was that we had slavery in this country, in the South, it was all Southerners, and slavery was some people owning other people and making them work for them. And that the people in the North thought that was wrong and we had a war and the North won and the slaves were free and that was the end of it. And everything, and, and that was my subtotal of what is, is the single most impacting piece of American history. And, and that, I mean, much of what we have today is a product of what happened then. What I knew when I got out of our good public schools about Native Americans was that there were millions and millions of them and then, and when we landed, they came and they fed the pilgrims and then we ran them off the land and put them in reservations and everything is okay since then. That's what I knew about Native American history. A personal incident, my father himself was a school teacher in the Vietnam War era. He himself was a World War II vet. Because nothing was being taught in the schools, he decided one day to call in a Vietnam vet to talk about the war, the war. This vet didn't have the same view as the US government. And, and my father ended up getting called in on the carpet. But it was just another, how, my point is how our schools have steadfastly, and I don't know, I'm trying to find out what we teach now, and I figured I could know what we teach by looking at the tests, and I hear that I can't see the tests, that they're, they're private information or something or other, these ESVAC, they're somehow hidden from, so, so I can't figure out yet what we teach kids. Now, I know this whole thing revolves around third graders and a lot of the, of the things I speak of is knowledge that should be dispersed throughout all the grades. And, but I do have a real concern, the same, I do think young kids are capable of understanding a whole lot more than we are willing, young kids and older kids, of, of understanding what seems to be a whole lot more than what they ever get knowledge about. And it is that controversial knowledge that is the very substance of what teaches them how to think, as we say, by saying the other sentence. Here.
Robin, did you have something? You seem to be jumping over there.
I was just gonna comment that I, that I don't feel that the ESVAC tests are relevant to this type of learning that goes on in the schools. The test is not reflecting what did they learn at Academy School. It's testing, did they learn these very specific things that we're trying to measure with this test? There's a lot of other content and learning that goes on that is not tested on those. But I do hope that even though this particular situation didn't go as planned, that it doesn't deter the school from continuing to have these sort of challenging subject matter with the kids. But I think it's absolutely appropriate that the administrator should have a full understanding and knowledge of exactly what's gonna be talked about. And the fact that, as the person who came to our meeting emphasized, it's not that we shouldn't teach students about injustices. And it's true that third graders can be very black and white in their thinking, but I think that if we had shaped this conversation a little bit, with a little bit more planning and intention around what was gonna be discussed, that the whole point is to challenge that thinking that the kids are in and, and help push them to the next level where it's not just, you know, the good guys versus Voldemort. But that we have a little, that's what our role is as schools, is, is teaching them that critical thinking and, and topics like this can be a, an happening before that, but it has to be done in a way that makes all people, especially marginalized groups, feel safe and not attacked or, or like they're the bad guy.
Yeah, I mean, it can be really harming to give a single perspective of a very complicated situation.
And I will also say that from our meeting, I learned that this teacher who had planned the speaker also had planned a film that she showed about some Israeli heroes that were contemporary folks doing really good, I can't remember the specifics of it, but it was to, she wanted to make sure they got a perspective of, that there was good people on both sides of this, that it wasn't good versus bad. And so I think if, if there was some kind of expectation of like, what is gonna be talked about, how can we shape this in an age-appropriate, balanced way that would make everyone feel more comfortable with the topic?
Any other comments from the board or administrators?
Just, just sort of reinforce what Robin said about, we don't want people to be intimidated or discouraged from, from inviting speakers in order to bring topical issues forward, to do it appropriately and to, and certainly to debrief on something like what happened here, happens, so that this, this children understand what's going on and, and our help to develop that perspective. But I don't want, I don't want in any way to be discouraging people from bringing, bringing issues to the kid.
Yeah, I don't think anything we've done or would intend to do does that, just the opposite. But there's, there's parameters and, you know, we have to closely set those parameters. And there's ages, and it has to be an ability to understand the, the age group of the audience that you're presenting. Certainly, we could all agree on an age, that age is important, right? I mean, would we do this to kindergarten kids or in Oak Grove, would we do this to pre-K kids? Have, have the same speaker? Where would we, we would all maybe say, we would all maybe have different, different age, and I think it's appropriate.
I do think there is age-appropriate learning on this topic for all ages. Was this story something I would have four-year-olds listen to? I, I didn't see the story. I'm guessing not. But, you know, there are picture books about Jewish and Palestinian kids coming across town to make friendships. So I, I do feel like the age-appropriate thing has to be there, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't talk about this topic until seventh grade or something like that.
Right, but the presentation has to be tailored to the learner. That's what teaching is. That's what we do. That's what we spend a fortune, a significant amount of our money, professional development, to, to, to tailor the learning, tailor the instruction to the learner. We have to understand the learner and how the brain works. And that's important. That's not up to the speaker, that's up to the teacher, that's up to us to understand that. And, you know, so. I know you, we have, we're about time, we have several people here, I guess, and I'd like to weigh in on it.
Yep. So anybody else wanna say, one, one more round for anybody out there?
Yeah. I failed to, when I introduced myself, to also mention that I'm on the anti-Semitism committee at the Jewish community. John Ungerleiter is the chairperson. I was made aware of all this secondhand. I was not present at any of these presentations, neither at the Academy School or at BAMS, but I, I take full, I have full confidence in the reporting of the, the activity that went on from the persons that reported to me. I have full confidence and trust in their assessment. So I have, I have no doubt as to the veracity of it. They reported, one of the examples was that in the presentation, it was, we, it was referred to as bad Jews. You know, another thing.
Were you talking about the presentation at the Academy School?
At the Academy School, yes.
That was at BAMS.
Oh, at BAMS, okay, excuse me. I was not there. But it happened, you know? And so that, that reference is planted in a young person's mind. And we all know, I think we'd all agree, that hatred, discrimination, bias, call it, whatever you choose to, if you plant it in a young person's mind at an early point in their life, it's likely to, to, to turn, be nurtured one way or another. I mean, we don't have to go into the whole examples of how that's been, been presented over the history. Another thing I, I was told, and I, I believe, is that there was a video or a film that showed some horrific images to the third and, I guess, fourth graders of children being harmed, maimed, whatever, but, but not, not suitable for those, that age group. I doubt that any one of you parents, I'm not a parent, but if I were, I certainly would not allow my child to go to an X-rated movie. Not, not an X-rated, a PG, an R-rated movie, excuse me. You know? And these images that were shown in the, the presentation were kind of like R-rated. So how can we separate saying, well, that's okay, but no, I wouldn't let my car, my child go to an R-rated movie on their own or even with me? So, and then, no, I guess that's all I gotta say. Oh, I would like to add that the letter, I, I did write a letter to, as co-president, signed by Laura Berkowitz, who is the other co-president, to both editors of the Reformer and the Commons. They subsequently were printed in the Reformer as a companion piece and also extrapolated and included into a more in-depth, in-depth, full-length article by Babadet. And the Commons personally, I mean, the Commons printed the, the letter by itself just last week, I think it was, or a week, two, two weeks ago. I also sent the same letter essentially to Lyle. And if, if you have that, I would like to have that read into the record, if that's possible. Thank you.
Another comment?
So I want to say that starting this meeting by seeing what the kids are actually doing around justice and fairness and diversity and so on was profoundly moving and encouraging to me. Clearly, what you're trying to do in the schools is teach kids to think about these issues in a mature way and talk about them and work together. I am assuming that this particular presentation was an aberration that flew in under the radar and I'm heartened to hear that you. flew in under the radar, and I'm heartened to hear that you you know that you're thinking about putting some procedures in place that can be more uh filtering for this. Um, for me, as um as the spiritual leader of the Jewish community and also as an educator, I have a master's of Jewish education, um, this really does boil down in part to age appropriateness. Um, what a third grader, how a third grader is ready to think about these issues is much different than how a sixth grader or an eighth grader is. And again, it also needs to be supported in the curriculum, as you said, and not um kind of dropped in out of the blue, you know? And if you're talking about these kinds of issues, you need to have supporting time curriculum background. Um, and the only other thing I would say is um there are other places in the world where there are, there is tremendous oppression and um, you know, these kinds of issues are transpiring all over the place. And it's always of concern to me when the Israel-Palestine issue seems to be the only one that we're talking about. Um, and, you know, so I would hope that if schools are gonna tackle these things, that they're gonna be talking about, you know, let's say the Rohingya people or the people in northern India, the Kashmiri, um, American treatment of the Native Americans. I mean, there's a whole parcel of stuff here. Um, that's really all I wanted to say. I don't wanna waste your time anymore. I'm gonna make my exit. I wanna thank you all for thinking about this and taking it seriously. And um, and I hope that um you know, I hope it started some thinking processes for all of us. I mean, just thank you for the time.
Any other comments?
Hey, um, as well as being a parent, as I said, a product of the Brown Road system, I also have my master's in education, licensed education skills in both Massachusetts and Vermont. Um, and I have great empathy for the teachers who are walking that fine line between presenting topics that they may not have had classes on in grad school. Um, if I was dealing with an issue like slavery or incarceration of Japanese-Americans in World War II, there'd clearly be very different things. You wouldn't talk about systemic, systemic rape of black slaves in a young classroom. You would look for the right picture books that talked about, you know, I couldn't be with my mom during the day or whatever. So um, I I like the fact that this form has been developed. That sounds like a great idea. And as a parent and towns person, I'd like to see it present in other schools. I will say that many of you probably know Star Latronica, who's the library director. And she's recently instituted a new line in the form when people sign up to use the public space there. It followed somebody who had requested to use the public space to discuss the press and media in the U.S. And it turned out to be a very targeted, uh, what the speaker felt was an expose of how many newspapers, magazines, TV stations, and other media outlets are owned by Jews and sometimes Jews from other countries, as he presented it, and how none of the news that we as Americans see is accurate. Um, and so Star now has something where someone's coming from outside the community, they need to provide a a reference, basically, that isn't from their immediate group. Because she said afterwards that she never had permitted this person to speak in the library with the blatant untruths that they were giving. So a respectful suggestion is that, as well as a teacher saying, I think this person was great, it would be good to know what conference did they learn about them from or who else has had them in their classroom uh so that there is more information. And despite the fact that many people think that American media is controlled by Jews, there's countless bits of daily and larger information that we never hear. Um, you know, we don't hear that two truckloads full of medical equipment were turned back at the border by Hamas today because they refuse to have anything with Israeli, uh, the fact that Israel is donating medical equipment excepted. So um, it is, I agree that it's a very complex topic, but I appreciate here having a chance to say um my opinion about it.
So, okay, Lyle, we just love her. I'd like to move on to our agenda.
To Lyle, hallway superintendent of Schools WSESU. I'm writing to you on behalf of the Brown Road area Jewish community, also known as B A J C or Congregation Shur Hiharam. Am I saying it right?
Hihari.
Hihari.
Good enough.
Of which I and Laura Berkowitz are co-presidents. In addition, I am also on our antisemitism committee. It has come to our attention that recently there was a presentation shown at local elementary schools in the Brown Road area and BAMs whose subject matter was the condition and plight of Palestinians in Gaza. It seems this program was introduced to third graders and other young students much too young to fully grasp, understand, or fathom the complexity of the delicate situation in the Middle East. Adults can barely manage or comprehend it themselves. Not only was this program one-sided, presenting a skewed, biased perspective, but apparently unauthorized by at least one school's principal, all the while overlooking to inform two Jewish teachers about the program. When they found out about it and did attend, they witnessed and were appalled by what they saw children being exposed to, a slanted antisemitic presentation of Jews as bad people while skirting a balanced view about Palestinians. The Middle East situation is complex, complicated, and multifaceted enough without adding confusing, distorted facts and misinformation to our children. We here at B A J C hope and trust that appropriate actions will be taken toward those who organize this program, and it will not occur again. If teachers and school administrators want to educate students about injustices around the world, that is fine and should be done, but do it responsibly and respectfully without inflammatory rhetoric or decisive images, excuse me, divisive images. Nothing is gained by that or can ever be solved with that approach. Respectfully, Stephen Randstadter and Laura Berkowitz.
Okay, so thank you all for this very thorough discussion, and I'd like to move us on to the agenda. Um, Kim, you were gonna be out of here because you have another commitment. So I have a commitment at seven, so. And so we're gonna be done at seven because I won't have a floor plan.
Do you wanna say anything that must be done today?
Well, so first thing I wanna do is actually get um warrants and the minutes approved and I think we could have one motion for all the minutes. There's nineteen, twenty-nine, and May second.
Second.
These are already done?
I move that we approve the minutes from those three meetings and all the warrants.
No. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, it's fine.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to recommend that we only do committee reports that have something new.
Okay, just before I leave the um finance committee, I believe we have set the SU meeting, May thirty, six o'clock.
Okay, that's good to know. May thirty. Okay, anybody else on any committee reports with six o'clock?
Six.
No? Okay, so how about we go to administrators for actionable items first? Andy and Helen, what do you think?
Okay, so um, I've got one is to accept the, uh, I'm sorry, to request a leave, a one-year leave of absence from her position as a fifth-grade classroom teacher at a campus school in order for her to work as a district-level math coach. It's from Team Beolstein. So it'll be one-year leave of absence to be the SU math coach.
What teacher?
Team Beolstein. Team Reed?
Team Be-
Reed.
Beolstein.
When you met kids in school, it was Reed. She sentences uh married and taken the last name Beolstein.
I just wanted to say her last name. Apparently, I say it the wrong way.
Beolstein.
So, we need a motion to accept that. Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Any other actionable things for the panel?
Yep, could you pass it to the assistant?
I heard we might have a vice principal.
Yes, I-
I actually heard people so excited, they said, oh, I'm so excited about this kid, and I said, I'm not too excited about this kid.
Excellent. Uh, so I'd like to recommend for hire, John Sessions. He is a current special educator at Academy in our step program. Um, he's worked for our district for several years in a few different capacities. I think he has a lot of really amazing strengths and will be a, a strong team. I'd like to hire him as assistant principal.
Do we have a motion to that?
I move that we accept the recommendation of hiring Jonathan Sessions as assistant principal.
And second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Moving on. Okay, we we can keep this until the end of the meeting, so you guys can keep reading while listening to Mark's actionable.
Okay, I got a couple of resignation, um, Courtney Perkins. She, uh, her and her husband are moving to Texas. They're making a big move.
I guess that's a little far.
Yeah, this decision was incredibly challenging for me, as I thoroughly enjoyed working at Green Street School. I learned a tremendous amount this year, and I appreciate all the encouragement and support I've received. Green Street School is a very special place, and I'm grateful I had the opportunity to be a part of this amazing community. Uh, so Courtney was, is a curriculum teacher, um, wish her well. And that means we have an opening for a sixth-grade classroom teacher.
We need a motion to accept-
I move that we accept the resignation of Courtney Perkins.
Second.
With regret.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Then I have two bids. Um, let's see, let's see the paperwork. Uh, the first one is we are putting in a skylight. Skylight. And um, it's actually for our step room. It's a, an interior classroom that has no natural light. So we're gonna add a skylight to provide some natural light, so it's not such a atmosphere. Um, so we are recommending the lowest bid at twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars to Reliable Roofing.
How could you not hire Plum Leaven Square? But how about League Proof?
All right, any kind of a motion, please?
We accept the bid of Reliable Roofing, according to twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars to install a skylight at Green Street Schools.
So I did have one quick discussion. It's, it looks like the bid opened on five-two, and then it said it was extended to five-fourteen, and the first ones came in five-seven, five-eight. And the last one that's the lowest is five-eleven. I'm assuming what that means. I don't know what I'm assuming. Why, why is it extended to?
They didn't get right, and so actually, I think it was Eugene reached out and um encouraged some other people to bid.
So the bid was, it was extended before they had received three?
We received one bid.
Okay.
And it was very hard. And we-
And that's not on the list.
Oh.
Correct. So we didn't feel comfortable with that. We um extended the timeframe. The company that did submit a bid, we gave them the opportunity to resubmit as well, indicating that we were gonna reach out um to obtain more quotes.
Is that why there's two that don't have a number by then?
They chose not, they chose not, uh, no. And the reason their dates is, is many of these quotes came through email. So it wasn't like a closed document that was open that long time, their email.
Okay, so all in favor of accepting this bid? Any other action?
So then another bid, um, again, we're installing an outdoor classroom tomorrow, uh, next year. So we went out to bid again.
Where does that follow the budget?
The slide and the public tables.
So we're gonna um build a hardscape with a pergola with um like a slate-chopped board and some natural stone seating. And it's right adjacent to the school garden, and it's gonna be a place that-
Up front? In the front?
It's actually directly over here, outside of Courtney Miller's um first-grade classroom. There's a beautiful space that is not utilized. Um, so we developed this concept throughout the year. We budgeted, um, I think it was fifteen thousand dollars for the project. Um, this spring, um, we attained a ten thousand dollar grant, um, that Paul Smith was able to attain for us. And then I worked with Frank, as we developed this idea, and recognized that it was gonna cost more than the fifteen thousand we had budgeted. I, I worked with Frank to um make some adjustments and make up a plan. So money we had um indicated to go towards some interior painting in classrooms is now gonna be used to fund this project, and the painting will be put off to the following year. So we had more than enough money budgeted to cover this project. Um, again, it was a similar process. Um, we had two bids that came in. Frank felt we really needed to have at least three um for a project like this. So again, those two um companies were um told that we're gonna extend the bid process, give them the opportunity to resubmit. Um, one chose not to, one chose to resubmit and reduce their price, while we also reached out to some other contractors. Um, and again, Reliable Roofing um came in with the lowest bid at thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars.
What's the alternative bid of twenty-seven?
So we provided parameters for what we wanted the, the um project to look like. Um, that company provided an alternative in terms of material.
An alternative plan.
Yeah, that we're not crazy about. So we stuck to just comparing um the three quotes that were similar in nature.
I don't have a problem with some quote marks. I'm just a little surprised that something of this level wasn't pointed out to us during the budget process. I, did I miss that entirely, maybe?
Well, I did budget for it.
But I don't know, just it's normally in, you know, like, something new is pointed out. This is something that we're gonna do, but this is the first I remember hearing about it, but I could certainly have missed it if all the rest of you-
No, we don't get the principal, we used to get the principals' um, the, the wish list.
On list?
Yeah, so you did know the teachers.
It's, we had colored papers, that was fine.
I did stick to it throughout the process, um, because we specifically budgeted a line item for in the capital plan. So you have seen it.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just, I don't just-
I don't think there was a lot of discussion about it, because I don't remember that either.
And I know we went through the capital plan, but I don't remember ever saying, and I remember hearing about the slide.
But we didn't talk about it, the others didn't talk.
Uh, we did talk though about like painting-
Talking about some of them.
Painting and carpeting and different things like that, but the outdoor classroom-
Uh, those were expansion study.
Yeah, we talked about it. Putting off some stuff because of the feasibility, or not feasibility, the-
Usage study.
Usage and building study, so. I don't know, just maybe next time you have to wave things in my face harder, but I, I don't, I'm just, I'm just surprised. I don't know if I'm, I'm against or for or whatever, the budget that we try to keep tight. I'm just surprised because it would come up in my mind as unnecessary. It sounds nice, but if I were trying to be really tight on the budget, I would question something. Or whatever that's worth. So any other discussion? Are we ready to vote? Yes? All in?
Oh, I move that we accept the um recommended bid for the outdoor classroom for Reliable Roofing. The amount of thirty thousand.
Do you have that motion already?
Sorry.
Any other? All in favor?
Hi.
I'm gonna say no, because I was, I was, I was, I still vote for you. All right, any other?
Um, we have a fire alarm at the last school to um update our fire alarm uh panel, uh, project. And uh, we put it out, uh, the bid out to four companies, um, and received only two bids in return. Um, Frank feels that it was such a specialized um project that um he was comfortable with just um presenting you with the two bids and recommending uh Cleveland Electric at the base bid of forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight uh versus Kings Electric. A.L. Tyler, who does a lot of work for us, um, felt that it was just too big a project. They had a lot of things going on, that's why they, they were- had a lot of things going on, and that's why they were going to bid, they kind of walked through the whole project and then decided against it. They deceived.
So I don't need to refuse myself. But I have the-
No. I move to accept a bid from Cleveland Electric for $49,768 for fire alarm panel upgrade project at Oak Grove School.
That's very complete.
It's all right there.
Any, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do you have no actionable things from you? Anything we need to know from any of you that's-
Vermont Municipal Employees Retirement System is looking for a volunteer. If any of you are interested, I have the information.
And on the board?
For it to be on the board, Jill.
I thought we were looking for retirement.
Retirement.
Some of the volunteers. Too late.
Jill, I thought we decided to have these things ready for this meeting.
Yeah.
Town School Board Assessment Center.
You just handed it to me.
I mostly handed it in.
And Barb will compile them, and this will be something to look at at the retreat.
I did matter. Noteworthy accomplishments, anything we need to draw attention to in the ninety-nine minutes?
I have one more thing.
Go for it.
But I just think, I've been in talks with Deb Carden about the anti-op intern program that Academy has started.
Expanding it over here.
And we're looking to expand it over here, so hopefully we can make that happen for next year, but we're in talks of how that would look, how we would provide supervision. But, you know, there are great things about the Academy program, and I reached out to Deb at the beginning of the year that I'd be interested if she felt like there was capacity to extend it to another school, and it looks like there's one to two candidates that might work out.
Okay. So the class scores for EES, I know you forwarded to us. You have a one-minute summary?
The elevator summary, elevator speech summaries, that you do very well. And the way this works is that if we were to have fallen in the lowest 10% of the national scores, then our program would be required to be up for grabs and recompete, and we have certainly dodged off the bullet by-
Wide margin.
By a wide margin. And I can answer any questions you may have. It's kind of a complicated-
But you sent it to us.
I did send it to you.
And what are we talking about with the policy council?
We can certainly do that. But the, I think the significant piece that I want to draw your attention to is that we scored very high in emotional support for children. And so when we're talking about our community and the needs of our children, it's great news to know that, that others from the outside can see what we're doing, that we, you know, I think we do very well. Yeah. I mean, the scores are really high, and I don't know if I sent you the national high scores, but we are close to some of those, so we did very well.
So there's, on here, two things that we did before, I thought. Parent requests?
Nope. This is a new one. There's a request for an incoming kindergarten, kindergartner. This student will turn five on September 25th. Brian Bittner did some diversity assessment and thinks she was well-prepared for kindergarten, but you will need to-
Can I have a motion on that?
Any other?
No. Keep going.
Chelsea's going to be sick typing. I move to accept the recommendation for the early kindergarten.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Act two fifty. Act two fifty, this is a different one from the last time. Last time this culture made, this one is from Broadbrow Memorial Hospital. They're putting in some boilers. It has no impact on the school system at all.
Okay. I'm going to skip for one second because it's possibly executive session. So 1% applications were not ready for us. We'll get those. That moves to next agenda. We can take that one off. Summer retreat date and location. We did our doodle, is it doodle, doodle, something poll, and we have a date already, and I've sent it around to all of you.
Was that July eighteen?
No, no, it's August twenty-second. Twenty-third.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-third. August twenty-third, I, I put down 2:00 p.m., but I think I just put down a time because no one really got back to me on that. Two to six, does that work?
Works for me.
And location, Deb, can we do it with you over there?
Sure.
All right. So that would be at EES. Diversity date, training confirmation?
Still on September seventeenth, which is a Monday. If everyone's still cool with that, I think we should just leave it.
And that worked for her, and I think that's why I'm here, because you were going to ask her.
No, she, I had already agreed it with her, but then there was some thought of like, should we do it on the retreat or not, but I think it's-
That was my question, just because I didn't know what we were doing during the retreat, and I would like us to look at that at the next meeting and just make sure. If we don't need four hours, I don't see that we have to be together, that it's not nice to see you all.
Jill, somewhere along the line, for some reason, I had written down school board meeting July eighteen. Is there a school board meeting?
I think that was one of the days we had discussed.
I loaded, but they-
Oh. So I can-
So you can take that. There is no meeting in July?
September seventeenth.
Confirmation of location of next meeting is going to be the Policy Council joint meeting, and so that one is June sixth at EES, right? And then we do also have a June twentieth school board meeting. Is that right for everybody?
Still at EES?
I will not be here for that.
And I won't be here for the sixth, but Marissa Duncan Hallard will be.
And those are both in EES? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's okay. So that would bring us to the EES for all of the two June meetings, not meeting in July, and then the one meeting in August.
Oh, so that's, that June twentieth one's our last meeting until the retreat?
Yep.
Does that give you a problem?
No. Just checking.
Okay. So then the next question is next agenda items, and then we'll come back to do the administration separation agreement and possibly go into an executive session. Next agenda items, seems that we need to talk about the 1% applications.
Do you want to bring topics for the summer attendance?
Topics.
So we could bring, start that and finish on the twenty.
Anything else?
Just remember that half of the meetings are policy council.
So that's actually twenty right there.
Yeah, it's not there.
Yeah. Leadership from Academy, when does that happen? Any presentat, any presentations from Academy? Are they planned or no?
The students, I mean? Yeah. Actually, the sixth, June sixth is our family fun night, so we won't be able to do it then, but the twenty is done.
I took a volunteer to work at the Mount House.
I'm just sorry. So it may look like a cap, we could speak to us in the fall, because I don't think you want kids to come in after school's open, right?
They wouldn't want to.
All right. So then we're on to the very last item, which is administration, administrator separation agreement.
Correct. So Broadbrow Town has a local board policy, local board policy seven, that says the board may decide on recommendation by the superintendent to pay a bonus to a retiring administrator. Eligibility will be after 15 years of service to WSCSU. The administrator announces his or her retirement before January fifteenth, and then the bonus is tied to the retirement bonus of the teacher contract. Currently, the separation benefit for teachers is $8,000. In addition, the superintendent may recommend that the board approve an additional amount between 100 and 150 for each year served in Broadbrow Town. For Andy, who is retiring, this would come to a separation benefit of $9,800. I used 150 to figure that amount. I would need board approval for that. If you would like to discuss a different amount, we can do that. If we're going to talk about it based on Andy's performance, we will need to go into executive session.
I would like to go into executive session.
Okay. So there's a motion. We need a second and an approval of that.
Do you want to executive session?
Yes.
And when they're given that it's seven o'clock, if we can wait and do that?
This is the last.
The problem is, we're running out of time. It needs to be processed.
Before July first.
Well, it needs to be processed before the last pay, which would be-
So it answers no.
Okay. So, all right. I'll second.
You can award, you can award that, the school district can award that anytime, it could be next year. You're only saying that if we're going to give it to him with his last year when he's walking out, but it could be done anytime. It's no longer-
So, okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. We need, we can discuss that. I'm going to throw out for discussion that I don't, I don't have anything that I would say in executive session about Andy that I would not say with him in the room, so I don't, I don't feel like I really need to go into executive session unless it's a bother.
I'm not certain what, if you want to discuss Andy's performance, that we would go into a second or second.
Well, I just, again, it's like you were hit with something you never expected or heard of.
Now, or a classroom separation.
So all of a sudden, you know, I get, I get hit with this. It seemed like it should have been business that was taken care of months ago or a long time.
This is the normal time for when somebody retires.
Well, I know, but we knew Andy was retiring several months ago, and at that point-
Okay. So let's do a vote on whether or not to go into executive session. All in favor?
I'm sorry. Can you just clarify, is anything that you're discussing personal about Andy, or is it more just about the idea of this? Because if it is about the idea, then I don't think we need an executive session, is that right?
We have, there has to be some, something that would damage the school district if the public had been sure where it's somewhere.
Or if it's about his performance.
Yeah. Well, that would be damaging to him. Maybe. Probably not in this case.
But that doesn't sound like that's your concern, is that correct, Susan?
There are some things I'd like to say.
Okay. So can we have the vote? Yes, no, into executive session?
Fine.
Aye. Okay. Into executive session we go. Goodbye to the rest of you. I don't think you all will come back.